You need it, just let me know.
Um, yeah, it wouldn't hurt. I can then pull it up the decision for oh fine. Oh wait, I think I have it here. There we go.
For Fleishman?
Yeah, I have it. No, no, for, no, for, um. Yeah, Fleishman, yes.
Did you find it?
Yes, I have it.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Oh, there it was. It was hiding. Time now is seven o'clock. Oh, boy, look at that. Time flies when you're having fun, huh? We're spacing out on your computer. So we have a quorum.
Sure do.
Me, Michael, Marcia, Joseph, and let's, uh.
Jude will be back.
Yeah, so she said. All right, well, um. Now, just give her another minute because we have a case to hear, so. It comes more. Hey, Martin. Evening, Martin.
Evening.
Well, um. Not sure what happened to Jude.
He had to reboot her computer.
Yeah, I, I know, but you know. I don't really know what's happened to her. You know, where that could lead, so, um. Well, she can join in, so I'd like to call. Okay. Now.
Yeah, she is.
I would like to call the Woodstock zoning board of appeals meeting for March twenty fourth, two thousand twenty-two to order. You have Gordon Wemp.
Jude Salado.
Marcia's willing.
Martin Mills. Joseph Belik.
Okay, we have a quorum and then some. I'd like to submit the minutes of March tenth, two thousand twenty-two for approval. Do I have a second? All favor. Hi, okay, minutes approved. We have a public hearing tonight. ZBA case twenty-two dash oh six. Application of Ren Hockey for property located thirty-five Blue Stone Road, Woodstock, New York, one two four nine eight. A one point three two acre parcel located within R five within NR five zoning district. For a variance from the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, Article Four, area and bulk regulations. Modification of required yards, section two sixty dash twenty-six B two B. For a four foot infringement into a minimum required twenty-five foot side yard setback. In order to construct a forty foot, nine and, nine and a half inch by fifteen foot, seven and a half inch studio slash pool house. Okay, and I believe we have, uh, Mr. Hockey, if you're making the presentation tonight?
Uh, sure. Um, hi, I'm Ren Hockey. Thank you guys for considering our application. Um, so, yeah, we, as I'm sure you guys have seen already on the plans, uh. We would like to build a pool house off the back of our garage and it encroaches, as he said, um, by four feet. Um, but one thing to note is that I own the property that it encroaches on. Um, and so kind of in the spirit of time, I was hoping to, um, push this forward. Somewhat fast so, um, so that I could proceed with the building of our pool and figuring out kind of how that finishes with the pool house. Um. Yeah, and otherwise, I guess my only other option would be to do a lot line adjustment, which I was hoping to avoid.
Okay.
And, and the, the location of this, of the pool house, uh, relates to how we finish the pool. Um, deck, uh, with, with respect to the footings and also where we put the pool equipment and the plumbing.
Can I ask you a question? Are the two properties owned in the same name?
Yeah. There.
So that the ownership is exactly the same between the two.
There's actually three lots, yeah.
Sound familiar?
What?
Sound familiar?
Yeah, uh, not, well, no, not exactly.
You had somewhat a similar case that brought you budget to us.
Yes, but mine, mine are, were owned in different names because if, if they're adjacent and owned in the same name, they actually merge into one property. Automatically by operation of law. So.
No. That's not true because when, I'm, I'm, we'll get into the semantics of this, but when I purchased my property, it was in different parcels and they are separate parcels for tax purposes. They, and they were all owned by the same person, so people do own adjacent or contiguous lots in the same name and they're not automatically merged.
All right, well, we don't have to debate this here, but.
Well, i- i- in the spirit of, of, of what we're doing here, if we, uh, if you were to sell that lot after we gave them the variance and it was encroaching in, in a threatening or, you know, in a non, uh, environment, whatever, if it did not meet the criteria. I think we'd have to take that into consideration.
Yeah, well, you may.
Even so.
Hockey, you may just want to check on that because.
I'm why, I mean, I pay, I pay three different tax bills.
Yeah, no, I understand that. That's not what the issue is. The issue is that adjacent lots owned by the same person mer- merge together, so. A, a real estate lawyer, if they were advising you, would say, like, put one in your name and one in the name of an LLC or something like that, so. It, it doesn't affect what we're doing here, but you might just want to check on it for your own benefit. If you're planning on selling one of them later or something like that.
My, my plan is to not sell them, um. Eventually, once we're, I mean, I've been in construction there for much longer than I had hoped. So I'm just trying to get my family moved in, um, hopefully by summer and, uh. I think that once we're there and we're settled, my plan was to actually consolidate the three lots that we actually have.
You never get out of construction, I'm sorry.
I know, I know. I'm in, and I'm in building and this one has been tricky. So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a little older than you and I still haven't figured out how to get out of it though. So anyway, um, with that, uh, we, you were still giving your presentation when Joseph asked you the question, so. Uh, you want to go forward a little more on what you were saying?
Yes, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure what more there is to say. I mean, I, other than, you know, uh. It's, it's, it's really subjective, um, as to whether or not you guys think it's okay. I mean, I, my plan is to consolidate them, but, you know.
Well, some of the things that we take into consideration would be view sheds, um, encroachment. You know, just say you were to sell that piece of property, would this affect that property? You know, would it be right in the view of, of their mountain or the trees or, or, you know, create an uncomfortable situation for another property owner? That's, that's a big, a big.
Yeah, it's, it's hard without, I mean, just kind of explaining it. If you're looking out of the back of the house where the pool house would be, there's the neighbor to the left. I, I, I'm not familiar with their names. This actually is not in their view shed whatsoever, um, and this would be on the high point, the high, highest corner of the adjacent lot that I own. So I actually think that the pool house, um. If I don't mind saying so, uh, would enhance, um, you know. I, I think it'd be better for the neighbors who do live, uh, through the woods there. I think it would protect them from sound and, and sight that they probably would rather not, uh, you know, bear witness to.
But it, it buffers the pool actually to the other property?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, uh, I'm sorry I didn't sign somebody sooner, but usually we like to do a site visit. Is there anybody here that would like to take this one on? Okay, Marcia, thanks. Uh, can you get out there fairly soon? I guess he's in, you know, so if this is something we can move forward uh, with expeditiously, then we'll try to do so.
I could get out there this weekend. Are you around there?
I can't, I would do anything to meet you there.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and then Marcia, you can take even a few pictures and, and give, give us your opinion on that.
Okay. Okay.
You know, see if there's a, anything you see that would be an issue. Um, it's not a large encroachment, so that's, that's something in your favor too.
Thank you. And the building is not that large either. What, six hundred and fifty square feet, six fifty-six?
Yeah, and you have it grouped with the other houses, so the other buildings, so it, it seems, uh, like the same, uh, arrangement.
Yeah, I mean, and that's the other thing, architecturally speaking, if this matters at all, but we, we're trying to keep the pool house in the same language as the house and the same scale. Scaling it down, you know, is doable. Um, moving it would kind of be awkward, uh, for where it is, uh, just because I want that bit of separation in laws and such. But, um, yeah, I'm, I'd be happy to host you and, and have you come out to the property this weekend, so whenever it's convenient for you.
Okay, is there, are there any other questions from the board this time? Looks like you know.
Okay.
So, uh, with that, I guess, um. Just, uh, uh, can, Michelle, can you read the contiguous neighbors?
So there's only two other ones and it's Marie Claire Hyman and Arling Scheckt, and there were no written communications or, um. Phone calls or anything for these. Actually, I did speak to, um. I did actually speak to both of them to let them know that tonight was a Zoom meeting. One told me that she's unfortunately, um, completely blind, so this really would have no effect on her. And Yellen said that she, it didn't, she didn't mind the project, so.
Yes, we have to, you know, we notify all your contiguous neighbors about the projects that you come before us.
Okay.
All right, so, uh.
So should I reach out to, to Michelle to make these arrangements with Marcia for?
I'll, I'll contact you and.
Okay, great.
I think Jude, you gonna come with me? Okay, so I'll, I'll, we'll figure out some times and get out there this weekend. I'll, I'll let you know. I'll call you and see what works for you as well.
Great. Yeah.
Oh, get an umbrella. I'll be there rain or shine.
Bring your towels. Oh, yeah, the pool's not up yet. Okay.
No, not yet. Well, it's in the ground, you, but there's no water in.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you guys so much. I appreciate it.
All right, so with, with that, I'll, I'll, I'll open it. We do have one member from the public here, Mr. Kosh, but I, I, I'm gonna say that. I'm gonna eventually, he doesn't want to chime in on this one, but maybe they don't. You're, you're the public. Would you like to speak on this?
Uh, Mr. Wimp, thanks for, uh, offering and, uh, I just want to say I, I really enjoyed the presentation from Mr. Hockey and, uh, and support it in full, uh, pending the site visit and know that the board's gonna make the right decision, so good luck with your project, Mr. Hockey.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Well, with that, um, I would like to close the public hearing. And, uh, with that, uh, with a little tale to that, we try to do things, uh, as quickly as possible. We have sixty-two days to render a decision and we sometimes push that with some of the cases we've had lately, but the easier ones, we try to knock out in a couple of weeks and we'll certainly do our best.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Hey, and so with that, I would like to recess, um, case number. What is this, twenty-two? Oh, what?
Six.
Six. Wait, it's recess case twenty-two oh six. Do I have a second? All favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hockey. So, um, on to other business. We have some, uh. Votes to, uh. And we'll go in order. So, I would like to, um. Open case number ZBA twenty-two dash oh one. Uh, for the purpose of voting and possible discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? Is there any discussion anybody wants to have about this before we vote?
This is Josh's case?
Yes.
That's, okay, so I actually do want to say something. I just, I, um. This is a really tough case and it was really difficult and I really hope that the neighbors can be good neighbors to each other. Regardless of how this goes. I just, you know, it's one of those that was really troubling and really difficult for all of us. I want you to know, we really worked hard. That's it.
Okay, so anybody else on the board? Okay, so, um. I have a resolution based upon the standards for consideration of area variances and conditional upon compliance with stated representations and area variance for an zero point eight oh acre parcel located within R five zoning district for variances. From the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, Article Four, area and bulk regulations, section two sixty dash twenty-four A two. Accessory structures and features in yards is modified by section two sixty dash twenty-six B two for a twenty-eight foot infringement into a fifty foot rear yard setback and seventeen foot infringement into a twenty-five foot side yard setback. In order to install a ten foot by sixteen foot prefab storage shed is hereby granted with conditions subject to all requirements of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, New York State Real Property Law and all other applicable laws, codes and regulations. The applicable, the applicable conditions, uh, scope is followed. Due to the concerns from neighboring properties in regards to noise, the board applies the following conditions for the grant. One, no power shall be extended or applied to the shed at the existing location or location of said variance. Two, the shed shall remain for storage only and shall not be utilized for a workshop, garage, studio, or any active sustained activities. Which should not apply to the maintenance of the structure, example renovations, organization, shoving, et cetera, or the normal usage of a storage shed. Notes citing informal dispute as to the actual quantification of the setback. In the variance applied for, this board does not see an actual difference in the scope or determination of the five criteria. If the setback is proven to be greater than that which has been applied for, as long as shit is, as long as the shed is actually and remains fully on the applicant's property at the cited location. Vote is as follows. Gordon Wemp, aye. Michael Castillo Leon.
Yes.
Jude Salado.
Aye.
Joseph Belik.
Aye.
Marcia's willing.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we have five in favor, none opposed, none absent, and none abstaining. So with that. I thank you all. Good luck, Mr. Kosh, in your future endeavors. Sure, why not? The case is, I, I guess, yeah, what, Michelle? I'm sorry, were you gonna say?
I just wanted to tell him what, um, the next step would be tomorrow. Um, Karen Webb is gonna come into the office, he'll sign the final decision. Once that happens, then I will, um, send you a copy via email and that will also be sent to the building department. And then your next step, once you get that email from me, is to call them in order to get all of the permits or whatever you need to do with them.
And, and since you're here, Mr. Kosh, and Scott, uh, is it Mrs. Kosh? I'm sorry.
Civilly.
Civilly, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry. Um. Uh, do you have any questions about the conditions that, that are applied at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Just wanted to make a, a comment if, if we were allowed.
I guess the case is sort of over, so sure.
Thank, thank you. For hearing our case and, uh, to Jude's comment, know that this was a difficult one and we appreciate the time and effort put in.
Great. All right, well, thank you. Thanks for, uh.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting up with it all, so. All right. Have a good night. Okay, so that's, uh, case number twenty-two oh one. We have another one here. Uh, I'd like to open ZBA case number twenty-two oh three for purpose of discussion and voting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, do we have, um, any questions about this case before we vote on?
Yes.
Okay, this is something I brought up with Michelle and I, you know, maybe this is not the appropriate time to bring it up. But I do think I might be right about this one. Um, for the resolution, that last statement. Um, subject to all requirements, I don't think it applies in this case. I think that needs to be removed.
That you feel it should only be put after a granted request?
Yes. You know, Michelle went back and she found somewhere it was included and I found somewhere it wasn't included and so I don't know, maybe it's not the time.
I guess you could make a case for being there because, um, once you've denied it, it's still subject to all the. So, you know, if they've moved it within the setback, that would be within the requirements of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock. You know, that even it's been denied, but, you know, they still have to fall within these other regulations. So it's, it's, maybe it's a redundancy, but I don't think it, it, it hurts necessarily. We could look at it to clean up the language. I'm always old for that.
Yeah.
You know.
I just, I just, it didn't, it seemed to make sense, but okay.
It may seem very redundant. Yeah, I don't think it hurts anything, though, at the time. It's, it's more redundant or kind of, you know, nebulous in a sense. So, any, anybody else? Regards to this case? Okay, so with that, I'd like to read the resolution. Based upon the standards for consideration of area variances set forth in section two sixty dash thirty-two D of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock for a variance from the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, Article Four, area and bulk regulations. Modification of required yards, section two sixty dash twenty-six B two C for a twenty-five foot infringement into a minimum required fifty foot rear yard setback in order to construct, install a thirty foot by thirty-five foot barn and workshops hereby denied. Subject to all requirements of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, New York State Real Property Law and other applicable laws, codes and regulations. The vote is as follows. Gordon Wemp, um. Yes, the denial, yes. Michael?
Yes.
Jude Salado.
Yes.
Marshall's willing.
Yes.
Joseph Belik.
Yes.
The vote carries in favor, uh, five in favor, none opposed, none absent, and none abstaining. So, uh, with that, um. I would like to close case number twenty-two dash oh three. Second. And also, um, motion carries. Also, I don't think I closed case number twenty-two dash oh one. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? So that's, here we go. One more to go. On the votes. Uh, ZBA case, I would like to open ZBA case number twenty-two dash oh five for purpose of discussion and or voting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? So, um. Anybody have anything on this case to discuss before we vote?
Which one is this, Gordon?
This is the garage over on Minkalo.
Oh, okay.
The fellow that has this, was doing the store.
Right.
I went inside if anybody has any questions, but it's, was pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I agree. All right, so I'd like to read the resolution based upon the standards for consideration of area variances. And conditional upon compliance with state representations, area variances and zoning law of the town of Woodstock, Article Four, area and bulk regulations, section two sixty dash sixteen, attachment two E, the application for sixty foot infringement into a required seventy-five foot front yard setback to demolish an existing garage and construct a twenty foot, twenty-eight foot by twenty-six foot two-car garages hereby granted. Subject to all requirements of the zoning law of the town of Woodstock, New York State Real Property Law and other applicable laws, codes and regulations. The vote is as follows. Gordon Wemp, aye. Michael Castillo Leon.
Yes.
Jude Salado.
Aye.
Joseph Belik.
Aye.
Marcia's willing.
Aye.
Okay, by a vote of five in favor, none opposed, none absent, and none abstaining, the vote carries for the granting of twenty-two dash oh five. So with that, I would like to close case number twenty-two oh five. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Wonderful. Okay, so, um, we have some cases. I'm not gonna open them for discussion, but I would like to open them for the purpose of possibly assigning them. And discussion, if anybody really needs to discuss them before we move on with them. We have, uh, I guess I'll go in order. We have case number twenty-two oh seven, right? Yes, it's, it's Brian E. Kelly Craigow. This parcel is a pre-existing non-conforming lot with a primary dwelling which currently falls within one of the seventy-five foot side yard setbacks. House was last expanded and modified in two thousand two seven eight. Uh, reduce setback to fifty. We are seeking to add a second floor addition with a first floor screen porch that will modify the building footprint. A twelve foot relief from side yard setback will be required to construct this addition. Anybody like to take this one on?
Where is that one?
This one is located at. And that's, the property is, uh, that's their address, Minko, Minkalo Road, five thirty-five Minkalo.
I can go up there if you want.
Want another Minkalo job?
That's next to my neck of the woods.
There you go, great.
Okay.
Okay, so. And we have, uh, twenty-two oh eight Patricia Hurst at twenty-five Pine Grove Street in Woodstock. Uh, for five yard infringement into a ten foot side yard setback and a fourteen infringement into a twenty-five three yard setback.
That's Marcia's.
Oh, and pre-existing to construct three, yeah, addition. Marcia, you've got that one? Okay, so we're good on that. So Marcia has that one. And then the final one, this must be the fence, right?
Oh, the hundred yard, hundred foot fence?
Keith Bear.
Keith Bear, it's on two twelve and Willow also. If you want me to go by. Let's somebody else.
Up, up, yeah. Uh, I'm out that way too a bunch.
Okay. It's right on the road.
Yeah.
Joe, would you, would you want one of the cases? Cause I have two, I.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to take one of, whichever one you don't want, or. Well, you want to do the fence in, in Willow, or? Sure. Okay, so it's twenty-two oh nine?
What's the other one you have, Marcia?
I have, uh. Renee, what, Renee Hawkeye, the one that was here tonight, the public hearing.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
And the Pine Grove.
Yeah. I'll work with you on Pine Grove.
I might give you Pine Grove.
All right.
Okay, are there any other cases anybody we should discuss tonight that's, that are pending?
Um, the, uh, St. Gregory's case, who's gonna be writing that up?
Um, Martin, are you gonna write that one up for us?
Yeah, sure.
I think we need to talk about that one.
Okay, we need to talk about it now, or you need to talk about it with Martin, or, or what?
I think we should all talk about it.
Okay.
Now's good for me.
What's the number on that case? I need to open it.
It's, um.
You know?
Yeah, I know. It's twenty-two oh four.
Okay, I'd like to open up case twenty-two oh four for the purpose of discussion. Have a second? Okay. All favor? Right, so, uh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I went out there and I measured it and, um, it is about seventeen square foot double sided sign. They're allowed a ten square foot double sided sign. And Michelle was unable to find any variances. The building department doesn't have any variances, so they've already exceeded their allowance in signs. Um, what they were asking for was another twelve plus square feet in signs. So I just took a look and I went out and I measured a few things and, um. Like, okay, so the, the main St. Gregory's sign, the, the regular, the, not the capital letters, but the lowercase letters or the smaller letters are five inches. Um, they're pretty big and that, and she was asking for six, six inch letters. And then the lower sign, which was in white, which is part of that sign, at the lower sign, the lower lettering. Which I actually took a picture, but I think it says Episcopal Church. Um, those are two inches and I can see them from my car driving by. They're very, very visible. So I think, um, maybe what's being asked for is, um, more than what's needed and also um, might be setting a precedent for allowing a whole lot of signage, is basically triple what anybody's technically allowed, so, um. You know, I have some concerns, um.
Well, we have, uh, historically, uh. Given people an option to do less. So, um.
But that, that's not what they're asking for is less.
I know, but we did that with the Methodist church. They asked for more and we granted them less.
And they didn't, they didn't do it. So, you know, just because we're having so much.
I'm just saying, I'm just putting that out there. We don't have to necessarily deny, um, if, if, it's, you know.
We could give them something, but they're asking for a giant second sign. Whereas I could see why you would want to strip underneath and, you know, if you could read what's already there, it's two inches high. I'm not sure why you couldn't read, um.
Three inches, four inches.
Well, even the two inches, you can read it if it just says what time the services are, like Easter services or whatever, such and such a time. I just think it would be, I would think it would be visible. Everybody else can go by and take a look. I, like I said, I did measure. I just think it would be, I would think it would be visible. Everybody else can go by and take a look. I, like I said, I did measure. And their sign is, um she said it was uh two, two feet by eight. Did she say two? She said two feet by nine feet. And I measured it um more like eight. It came out to about um eighteen square feet, eight, eight and a half. Wide and two feet high. So um you know, I I don't, I. You know, it it gets a little bit confusing when you see something like that and there isn't a variance to be found. Like, was there one and somehow it just never made it through the process or how did they get there? I I don't know. And I don't know what we what we do in that instance, but.
Well, we could find out when it was and see if there was a a record snafu or something, but I know it was on the board. Um, you know, it wouldn't hurt, I guess.
Right. Well, the the date of it was uh. I mean, the permit is two thousand ten, November two thousand ten, when they got their permit.
I'm sure it would have been Howard's board.
Yeah, I think the sign as is, um it's really well done. It fits with the character of the neighborhood. So I believe what they wanted to do was raise it up. So if we could allow them to have a smaller sign, just to put the service times on, that would hook on to it. You know, or Easter Sunday services, whatever they want to say. Um I, from what I understood from her discussion, that's what she wa- was the main purpose of the sign. So they could announce the time of their services. So I think that can be done, you know, much smaller. Um and I'll go around, the fire department below me has a pretty big sign. And I don't think those letters are, you know, bigger than six inches. So.
Six inches, that would be bigger than all their main sign. I would, you know, just go by it and look at the lettering on the bottom.
Look at some, you know, uh there's several in Kingston too, and I believe there's one um at the Glenford Church. There's a sign.
A question, Jude, and I think we spoke about it earlier. So we had granted to the Methodist church a total of twenty, like we basically doubled the sign size. We offered them a twenty square feet of two signs and this one comes to about twenty-nine, you say?
Uh no, it's more than that. It's almost, yeah, it was twenty-nine, yeah, something like that. So basically, if we granted them.
Tripling.
It would give them two, it would give them two square feet.
Right.
You know, which. It's actually not terrible. Total, total twenty. Yeah.
I'm just one, just.
Martin, did you go by and take a look at it or?
Yeah, what's your input on this, Martin? I'd love to hear it.
Um, well. I'm just looking to see if, I think that we should give them a variance for it. Uh, you know, if they're looking for a twenty-three inch by seventy-eight inch two-sided sign. As an addition to their existing sign. And Jude, you said you measured that their existing sign is how many square feet?
It's eighteen.
Eighteen square feet.
Twelve point two. So it comes out to, it comes out to a little over thirty square feet if they get all of what they want, just three times what they're allowed.
Right. Yeah. So we don't know how they got.
Is it, is it a little strange that the last sign variance we had, we didn't approve in this sign variance we are approving?
Well, we're not, we're not approving anything. You mean if we were to approve this?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, if we were to. I'm I'm sorry. I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to assume that.
Are you referring to the Methodist church or the?
Well, we're, that's why I brought up uh reducing the giving the variance. That's what we do with.
Cause I don't, I don't remember giving early terrible an opportunity to reduce the size.
That was all, those were, that was a whole wall. I don't, I don't think.
But you know, what it is, is this, now I'd like to speak to this issue just as a, a, you know, observer. You know, churches and those kind of community things, those kind of signs, I think we won't do this on a Methodist church and that's why we grant them the variance. It's a useful thing and it's helpful to the community. You know, churches usually do some nice things that are mostly free. And and a good place for the community to meet. So it's to everybody's interest. Now, we do allow restaurants to have a little restaurant sign in their windows, which is like a second sign. So restaurants are allowed to have, you know, but it's just something that's fallen through the cracks. Sign laws, even Ryan Esquera, our attorney, she's the worst things in the world to write and whoever wrote ours did not disappoint. You know, so we have, yeah, go ahead.
Uh you know, I think you're right. And I, and you know, they are out of town and their argument that. The in-town churches are, you know, it's more easier to find out their information as you drive by or walk by. And where they're on on two twelve, you know, you're usually going by a bit faster. Um and they want to get their information out. I think they're providing, you know, they do community service and uh whatnot. And um. You know, if they need a sign to. Tell when services are, I think that's appropriate. And I don't think their existing sign is inappropriate. I don't think it's too big. Or not uh out of scale for the rest of the signs in town, whether or not they did that. To code, it didn't get, you know, it was not changed at the time. No one in the building department or the zoning board had any. Problems with it when it was built. Are you saying it was built in two thousand ten?
Yeah.
Kermit says.
We believe so.
Yeah, I certainly don't have a problem with their existing sign, whether it's eight square feet larger than it's supposed to be or not.
Certainly not as big as as the uh, as the Bearsville Theater sign.
No. Well, you know, the thing is, but if you do, I mean, listen, I do, I agree with you, Gordon. It is a different.
That was just a joke, yeah.
And for example, they're not like a door that's going to have regular hours. They probably are going to have some special kind of things going on. So I do see that. I just think I encourage you to drive by and see.
Yes.
How visible that two-inch line is on there and it probably could.
No, I think you're speaking to the point of of the size and since we are granting something that's. We did and and we did reduce. Originally, the Methodist church wanted a bigger main sign. And then a pretty large, they wanted to, they want to also get around this size. I forget exactly. I have to actually read it.
I actually have it.
Yeah, you should see what they were asking for, because we did not give them what they were asking for.
They asked twenty-six square feet.
Right.
Ten foot square side, square.
Forty square feet. They wanted twenty-six, right?
Right, and these people want twenty-nine or thirty. It's a.
They were, right, they were allowed, they, they were only allowed ten and the, the board allowed them twenty and they were asking for twenty-six.
Also, your measurement includes the frame on that, and I think we do include the structure that's part of the.
Does, and it does include the structure of the sign.
Yes.
I think that that everyone seems to agree that the existing sign. You know, fits with the property. It looks good. What we're trying to determine now is what the add-on would be. To be able to effectively let drivers know when the services are. And it can be reduced if you reduce six inch letters. Six inch letters are huge.
You remember, we did this, we did this with the marquee at the Sunflower too. They wanted a bigger. And we, we recommended a smaller one and it seems to work out fine.
Right. I think it'll be fine.
I, I. I need to give some thought to the idea that. A church or religious institution would get some special treatment. I, I'm not. I have to think, but it just seems to me. Um, first of all, there may be people in town who don't agree with that. Um and and second of all, it may be a First Amendment thing if you're somehow. Um giving an organization like that a bigger sign and maybe not another one. But um since I already went out over my.
We, we didn't, we didn't offer.
What did I say, Joe? I, 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 what you're saying is interesting and I'm also always concerned about precedent and all of that. You know, they are allowed temporary signs. You are allowed to put out a sign temporarily. I'm not sure how often. But they could also do that if these are really special.
And they've been doing that. They've been putting out the sandwich sign out front, you know.
I, I, my opinion isn't because they're a church. I think that. Uh anybody that needs a sign outside of town where there's virtually no foot traffic, uh Bearsville. That side of town towards Xena should have the uh. Should be afforded the opportunity to have signs that address the information they're trying to get, get through. It's not an in-town business. Sandwich boards are not effective like they are on Tinker Street or Mills, Mill Hill Road. Or anywhere in town where there's walking traffic, cars are driving slower, people are looking at things.
We do have.
Exists for the signs.
And we do.
So it doesn't, it's not split up into areas. It's.
Well, I understand, but we have to, you know, my opinion.
Not, but, not, but, but we did approve um a lighted sign. The LED sign for stewards because of the area it was in and what they were dealing with is driving cars and. The area.
There is actually quite a bit of foot traffic, not foot traffic, but you know, it's very close to the entrance to Big Deep and. And also next to gallows and there, there's a fair amount of traffic there. People.
Car driving.
And stopping.
There aren't any sidewalks.
I don't think that, it's, right. Equivalent to being a church in town and.
Right.
Having that, this, you know, the same signage as an in-town church. And that's their argument. And I think, I think it's relevant to say that, you know, they want to give the information. The sandwich board isn't, isn't doing it.
They're saying. I mean, part of my thing is that has nothing to do with religion, but the service they provide, which is, you know, they host AA meetings. They have music there, they have dances and these are free events for the community. So it's just something. And and that's just as an observer, not as a member of this board, just as a member of the community. I look at.
Their argument is that the signs in town are bigger than theirs?
The, no, their argument is that they have uh their, their location. Is less accessible for people to see the sign because it's on two twelve. No one walks by it. The majority of the other churches are in town and those churches are inaccessible with. Walking pedestrians, et cetera. So I think their argument is that they are not able to give the information they would. The other churches are in a easier way than having a larger sign.
Well, I, I, we've, like I said, we did grant something to the other church, the similar type of thing, an informational sign. Um, so I would take that into consideration. What Joe said is not something that is not with merit, without merit. Um but these are things we should, you know, look, we have, we have granted conditions, especially outside of the dam. Where it's less congested. So both churches, I'm just saying, so we, you know, we may want to look at that.
I would just encourage people to drive by and you see the gallows sign, the sign for the therapy center. Those signs are.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm for that, you know.
Just drive by and see those signs I think are within the um. The, the um what's allotted. I don't think they exceed it. So.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, okay, I'm not going to say anymore. I just think you should drive by, take a look and you know, this is one to really think about.
And I will go by some of those similar type signs and measure the, the size of letters to see. You know, and take pictures too, to see what would be.
If you see some informational signs and they're on a smaller scale but effective, that would, that would be a good thing to have.
I don't think the firehouse is in a smaller scale.
Oh, that's huge, the firehouse.
Well, they kind of, th- they, they scopped it our laws.
Yes.
They what? They did?
Yeah.
Well, they don't have another sign though.
They claim privilege.
Ah.
That they didn't have to follow.
I'm not going to argue with them. There are a couple doors from my house.
That was the big, that was a big fight over that firehouse.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Of the sign or just that building in there?
Everything, yeah, the building, yeah.
Wow.
The trees, the trees in front became the last fight.
Wow.
It made them keep those trees. They've been slowly disappearing now.
Yeah. They kind of break too whenever there's an ice storm and across the street at the vets too, they're coming down.
Okay, so I think uh.
If, yeah. If, if the church were a commercial business, we would allow them to have a larger sign?
An informational sign?
Yeah, it was, it was.
Oh, like I said, we let, we let restaurants have menu signs.
Yep.
I think it's important to allow businesses to have informational signs.
Sandwich.
Well, then we, that's, that's a zoning code. That's something that would need to be revised in the zoning. We have no jurisdiction over the law.
No, I think they should look at different buildings and their, you know, gas stations. We don't have a lot of laws for a lot of these things, so.
Right.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
That's why we're, that's what we're, we're here for. Clean up this mess. Okay.
I think that I agree with Marsha. Maybe they can reduce the sign, uh the, the, the size of the letters. They are using um possibly reduce this square footage of the sign total.
Okay.
Um if, you know, if we can find out what other size letters uh the church in town's using, doesn't the one um. By Brett alone have a sign that they have like service hours and they change it?
Yes, I think they do.
Yeah.
And I believe the Glenford one has one outside of it as well, doesn't it?
That's not in Woodstock.
No, but I'm just trying to get examples of signs that show services.
Well, the one uh further down two twelve, uh the, the Catholic church has it as well.
Also not in Woodstock.
He, that's not the point. They're just looking for signs that, signs that, no, they're just talking about now about.
Yeah, we're, we're not talking about specific Woodstock sites.
I want to just find examples of getting.
Inchangeable letters. Yeah.
I, what I was suggesting is that I'll take pictures of similar signs.
Right.
See what the letter sizes are and see, you know, show that we can reduce it and yet get the information out.
Okay, sounds good. I think we understand our homework for tonight, right?
Yes, we do.
Great, great.
Sounds good. Great, great. Okay. Anything else? So without uh objection, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting. In favor?
Aye. Aye.
Hey, hands are, got it. Michelle, thanks again.
Thank you, Michelle.
I'll try and get in tomorrow. I'm sure the coaches will be waiting.
Yeah, okay. I'm there from nine thirty to two thirty.
It's not really holding them up. I mean, they're not, nothing's going to change.
Right.
I know, I was just sort of.
Being funny.
Yeah.
Well, but those are the ones that you have to sign. So yeah, I'm there from nine thirty to two thirty.
We had three, so, okay.
Um, when are we going to start meeting in person again?
April.
It was extended until April fifteenth, so.
Okay.
We'll wait and see.
Okay.
Text day.
I miss having those folders in front of us.
You can always pick it up.
You still, you, just give you a notice to put one together, you mean?
Yeah, I've made them for Jude. Whenever she wants them, she just picks them up.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Night, night, everyone. See you in two weeks.
Thanks again, Michelle.
Thank you. See you tomorrow.